Okay, I'm just going to get started now. Good afternoon. My name is Amy Cox and I'm the Director for Career Readiness and Workforce Partnerships at the New York State Education Department. Thank you for coming to this afternoon's public hearing for the Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the 21st Century or Perkins Five. Before we begin, I would like to explain the guidelines for this hearing. This is not a technical assistance session. It is a venue for information dissemination and public input without immediate response to that input or questions. Questions and comments will be recorded and answered on the NISID Office of Career and Technical Education's Perkins website in a questions and answers section. We will be providing a Perkins Five overview this afternoon, after which those members of the audience who are pre-registered to submit questions or comments will be called upon to speak. Each speaker has five minutes to provide their question or comment. If anyone in the audience wants to submit written questions, there are cards available. Tim, there are cards available? Okay, check. In the back of the room and our technical assistance staff can help you. Otherwise, questions should be submitted to the email box provided at the end of this So the Strengthening Career and Technical Education Act -- pardon me, the Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the 21st Century Act, or Perkins Five, is a reauthorization of the previous Perkins Four Act. It is a continuation of federal funds to support the growth of CTE programs and the teaching of 21st century skills. 2019 through 2020 was our transition year from Perkins Four to Perkins Five, and the first full year of implementation will be the 2020-2021 program year. Perkins funding in New York State is based on a formula grant allocation that is non-competitive. For this program year, New York State received $56,867,904. Eighty-five percent of that funding goes to local secondary and post-secondary recipients, while the other 15% is split between state leadership activities and state plan administration. In New York State, with the exception of the Big Five districts and some small city schools, most districts sign their allocation over to their local BOCs. In order to access these funds directly, a smaller school district must have three NISID-approved CTE programs and three different national career clusters and generate a formula allocation of $15,000 or more. As this slide illustrates, the breakdown of Perkins funds in New York State supports secondary agencies, post-secondary agencies, two agencies serving incarcerated youth, and 11 secondary agencies that serve adult learners. It helps when you put the right slide up. There we go. So reviewing our Perkins Five timeline, this past spring, we were able to create a transition plan for the state to work towards the new expectations of Perkins Five. A revised application was used by applicants for the 2019-2020 program year so they could begin to use funds for program evaluations, targeting special populations within their programs, professional development for their staff, and to increase work-based learning opportunities for their students. The transition plan and local application were approved by the NISID Board of Regents and the USDOE in the spring of 2019. We then revised the performance targets that will be utilized beginning in the 2020-2021 program year. The secondary-level performance targets align with New York's ESA Plan for four-year graduation rate, English language arts proficiency, mathematics proficiency, and science proficiency. The post-secondary-level targets were consolidated from six to three and include retention and placement, attainment of industry-recognized credentials, and non-traditional enrollment. Our next step was to then draft the four-year state plan, as well as a comprehensive local needs assessment template and guidance, and a local application with the support of our stakeholder groups. The draft New York State plan and its supporting documents were presented to the Board of Regents in November 2019, and now we are in the public comment stages as we meet here tonight. Following these public hearings and the public comment period, we will process all of the comments and finalize these documents for submission to USDOE in April of 2020. So what is the Perkins State Plan? The four-year plan is our roadmap for change. The plan identifies partners and directions for improving the delivery of CTE education for all Perkins-funded programs. The plan also specifies the activities and products that NISID will develop to comply with federal law. As mentioned previously, the transition plan provided NISID and the local recipients a chance to prepare for the changes in Perkins Five. The department also had a chance to work with stakeholders to develop our draft four-year plan. During this time, our CTE office has worked closely with the Office of Teaching Initiatives on CTE teacher certification in regard to certification titles and how they align to the national career clusters. NISID's website now provides detail about the acceptable industry-related credentials and work experience necessary for certification and the multiple pathways available towards The CTE office has also worked with our Office of Information Reporting Services to revise the data reporting procedures. This work has been in consultation with the regional information centers so that this aligns with new Perkins data reporting requirements while reducing the burden on districts. A CTE advisory panel has also been created as a primary stakeholder group. This group of professionals from around the state is made up of representatives from both secondary and post-secondary agencies. They will convene for quarterly work sessions where they will advise NISID on the implementation of the four-year plan. Perkins Five addresses six main goals for the use of funds by local recipients. These six goals are increasing employment opportunities for subgroups and special populations, preparation for high-skill wage or in-demand occupations, integrating rigorous and challenging academic and CTE instruction that links secondary and post-secondary education, providing technical assistance that improves the quality of CTE faculty, teachers, counselors, and administrators, supporting partnerships between secondary and post-secondary institutions, local workforce boards, and business and industry, and providing individuals with opportunities and skills to keep the U.S. competitive. NISID has outlined four main priorities within our state plan for implementation over the next four years. These priorities align with the Perkins Five goals as well. Our first priority is to increase access to high-quality CTE programs. Increasing access can look many different ways depending on the students, the region, the agency, and we see this priority encompassing many activities such as informing all parents and students of CTE programs available within each district, having a clear agenda and expectations of each program offered, and being able to explain the skills and knowledge that will be gained through enrollment in each program, listing technical endorsements, industry credentials, assessments, et cetera, that will be available to each student enrolled in that program, and reducing barriers to participation in traditional and non-traditional programs of study. The second priority is to support special populations, including students with disabilities and English language learners enrolled in CTE programs. Activities that could be funded may include having promotional materials available in other languages for parents and students, working with special education teachers and consultants to provide appropriate supports for students with disabilities as they complete the work and prepare for the assessments in their programs, incorporating IEP accommodations as needed and monitoring this process, and proposing modifications to IEPs in preparation for students to enter the CTE programs at their annual review meetings. Priority -- whoops. Move right back. Priority three is to improve career development for all students in CTE programs. Recipients can utilize New York State Department of Labor data for their comprehensive local needs assessment, and also as they assist students researching career trends, skills required, and salary outlooks. Instructors can incorporate transferable and employability skills into all courses, as well as teach the technical and concrete skills required for their specific programs. Students should be conducting self-assessments and career assessments with the help of their counselors or instructors as well. Other areas to explore and/or utilize for these activities would be social media platforms, work-based learning opportunities, and career and technical student organizations. The final priority for the next four years is to build regional collaboration among secondary and post-secondary education and business and industry partners. This collaboration will be guided by labor market needs, and the goal is to work with recipients to develop regional articulation agreements. This collaboration will hopefully reduce burdens to local agencies and to maximize the partnerships available. In order to receive Perkins Five funds for the 2020-2021 program year, local applicants need to complete their comprehensive local needs assessment. NISID has provided a template and guidance documents to assist in this process. This will provide a standardized, structured assessment of all NISID-approved programs that are offered by each applicant. The template also ensures that applicants are using program-level student performance data to examine both strengths and gaps in access equity, support, and outcome for students. Applicants will need to examine their program's alignment with local, regional, and state workforce needs, and again, identify where gaps may exist and need improvement. This comprehensive assessment will then guide their application for Perkins funding. In line with our priority for collaboration and the Perkins goal of partnerships, the comprehensive local needs assessment must be completed with collaboration between the applicant and their identified stakeholder groups. The evaluation process will drive the local application so that funding is targeted towards needs identified using data and will strengthen CTE programs for local recipients. After conducting these public hearings, we will again meet with our CTE advisory panel in January to analyze all of the public feedback we gather from stakeholders. These recommendations will be considered as we finalize the state plan for submission to the Board of Regents in February, and then submit to the governor's office before the final submission to USDOE in April 2020. Links to our other hearings, as well as Perkins-related materials, can be found on NISID's Career and Technical Education page, as well as our CTE Technical Assistance Center's We welcome your feedback and comments on the Perkins State Plan. You can submit these via email to the box shown here. Please include "public hearing" in the comment line of your submission. And I'm going to say thank you, but I'll leave that up just so, in case anyone would like to use that link later or write it down. But at this time, I would ask Tim in the back, I know we have some folks that have registered to submit comments, so Tim will call them up in the order.
Good afternoon. My name is Nancy D. Miller. I'm the Executive Director/CEO of Vision Services for the Blind and Visually Impaired. I would like to emphasize accessibility, inclusion, and representation of blind persons in all of the education programs in New York State. People who are blind experience an unemployment rate more than twice the average of sighted persons. Less than 40% of the blind population in New York State is working, and many blind persons are working at part-time jobs when they want to work full-time or jobs below their skill level. To tackle this longstanding issue, Visions, in collaboration with the New York State Commission for the Blind, has created several initiatives to better match the skills of blind youth and adults with the needs of employers. Visions Residential Vocational Rehabilitation Center in Rockland County partners with Rockland and Westchester Community Colleges and BOCs to train legally-blind New Yorkers in jobs that employers have difficulty filling, such as nurse's assistants, teacher assistants, HVAC technician. Yes, blind people do pass and get certified as HVAC technicians, just to name a few. Visions is number one in job placements of legally-blind New Yorkers for four years in a row, but we are just making a small dent in the unemployment rate of legally-blind New Yorkers. There needs to be funding that is not siloed. Disability providers should be encouraged and assisted to access workforce funding and education funding, and funding from New York State should wrap around and fill gaps in federal funding. More effort must be made to educate employers about the skills and abilities of legally-blind workers and combat employer fear and discrimination that legally-blind job seekers report experiencing when they search for jobs. More effort needs to be made to inform the public that the vocational rehabilitation system for blind New Yorkers is available and able to assist them in preparing for and landing jobs. The New York State Commission for the Blind does an excellent job of serving blind New Yorkers both directly and through contracting with the private nonprofit sector, but it only reaches a small percentage of blind people eligible for services. A public awareness campaign along with individualized services can bring more blind people into the workforce in jobs commensurate with their education and experience. And I would urge SED to include blind people in those information groups and local groups to make sure that you're getting comments from the New York blind community. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Chapman? Good afternoon. My name is Nick Chapman. I am the President of Virtual Enterprises International, an education nonprofit intermediary serving 132 high schools and middle schools throughout the great state of New York. An initiative of the New York City Department of Education in 1996, VE has transformed the lives of over 150,000 young people through authentic business experiences that develop college and workplace competencies that ultimately prepare them for fulfilling financially secure futures. VE does this by partnering with schools, districts, and businesses across the United States to create educational pathways that align career education and work-based learning with academic standards-based education. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you today to share some feedback and concerns regarding the Perkins Five draft state plan. Before addressing my specific recommendations, it is important for me to highlight three important values that we share with our schools as it relates to preparing young people for successful careers. Number one, all young people must have the opportunity to learn and succeed regardless of zip code. Number two, a thriving global and local economy requires a skilled workforce. And number three, the nature of work and the workplace are changing. The future of work is coming out as fast and is being driven by emerging industries and business models, not by state and federal policy. The future of our young people is dependent on our ability as educational leaders to adopt policies that provide access, equity, and opportunity to support all students regardless of the barriers imposed by status, bureaucracy, and/or geography. With that being said, there are several concerns as it relates to the Perkins Five draft state plan that I'd like to bring to the committee's attention. First, there needs to be provisions for schools to access Perkins funding to explore and introduce CTE programs of study. If limiting funding only to approved CTE programs, the state is creating a challenge for schools and districts to fund and support emerging CTE models, creating unnecessary barriers to access and equity as stated priority. Not only does this new plan put up barriers for schools that are striving to introduce new programs of study and to get high-quality programs of study started in their schools, but it now also locks out schools that are currently in the process for the next two As noted and quoted from a guidance document published on December 16th of 2019, and I will quote, "Please be advised that only those programs approved by November 1st, 2019, will be eligible for evaluation by the Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment and thus Perkins Funding for the 2021 program year." So what this means is that many needed and meaningful programs now will not be eligible for Perkins Funding until the 21-22 school year at the earliest. This is not in the best interest of students and does not help to meet the needs of our local economies. Our recommendations include the following. One, opening up Perkins funding streams for exploratory CTE programs. Two, considering a "hold harmless clause" for schools that are currently operating in good faith towards program approval. And three, providing helpful and much-needed guidance to schools and districts on alternative funding sources for CTE. Funding that may include exploratory CTE, middle-school CTE, teacher certifications in shortage areas, and professional development. Secondly, we applaud the state for using work-based learning as an alternative measure. However, it is disappointing that there are not yet parameters for defining WBL for the purposes of measuring and reporting. If this is to be recognized as a measure, we urge the state to outline the process for ensuring community buy-in around the definitions and parameters of high-quality work-based learning. Additionally, we urge the state to consider alternative work-based learning experiences where access to employers and work sites may be limited. While CDOS provides parameters, it does not provide the specificity needed if the state is holding schools and districts accountable towards these measures. Finally, we ask our state officials to include its many various business, industry, and intermediary partners to contribute to the development of these parameters. There has to be transparency and relevance to the needs of students, schools, and employers for this state plan to be successful. At the end of the day, it is our responsibility as educators to provide access and equity to every student in New York so that they can realize their potential and find a fulfilling and financially secure future. We can only do that together. I thank the committee for the opportunity to provide my input on the proposed state plan. It is our hope that the Office of Career and Technical Education takes these concerns into consideration as this draft is revised and finalized for implementation. I thank you for your time and commitment in preparing the next generation of students for meaningful and successful careers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Simona Joate. Simona's not here. Clark Green.
Thank you. My name is Clark Green. I am Coordinator of Technology Education at Buffalo State College, and I'm very happy to be attending this today. The first comment that I have surrounds the specific reference on page 13 to the state required introduction to CTE coursework. I would just submit that this isn't necessarily a huge thing to be objected, yet it is substantive. I have had since the beginning of the introduction to CTE coursework changes at the middle school, I've had a number of STEM master teachers who have reported to me that they have been approached by their administrators informing them that they have to change their curriculum when they're already experiencing and practicing a very innovative approach to teaching middle-school CTE. So I would like to see this language softened a little bit to say "state-supported, state-encouraged introduction to CTE coursework." I think that would be more accurate, and also, that would be more in line with the actual language of the change in regulation that's found in the change in the commissioner's regulations. Comment number two, you mentioned the $15,000 threshold and the current structure of using small district pass-throughs to BOCs with respect to the dissemination of funds and the availability of Perkins funds to smaller districts. The reality is, there are probably tens of thousands, if not more, students in New York State that go to suburban and rural school districts that could definitely benefit from availability of Perkins funds, and yet, the knowledge of administrators in those districts in terms of how to access and collaborate with BOCs to get those funds to support their programs is just nonexistent. So I would like to see that addressed in the new Perkins Plan, look at some kind of a creative way that we could enable smaller districts, districts that could really use these funds, to embolden their CTE programs to a higher quality. And finally, I would like to commend the language in this document that encourages collaborative units of instruction between core subject teachers and CTE program instructors. At the federal level, there are proposals to encourage increased STEM education as well, and this would position CTE very much in line with that and enable a collaboration and consolidation of funds from different funding streams to really improve education. So I'd just like to congratulate you for putting that into the state plan. Thank you.
Dana Politis? Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm going to be speaking on behalf of the New York City Career and Technical Education Advisory Council, and then I'll be sharing some of my own comments. I'm Dana Politis. I'm the Director of Community Workforce Programs for Montefiore Medical Center, and I also serve as the Healthcare Commission Chair for the CTE Advisory Council. So on behalf of the New York City Career and Technical Education Advisory Council, thank you for the opportunity to submit comments regarding the draft New York State Perkins Five Plan. The council plays an integral role in the city's career and technical education programming by working closely with the City Department of Education, individual schools, and educators to make sure that the exposure and training that the city's CTE students receive is consistent with current industry practice. The council is made up of committed professionals representing all the major industry sectors in the city and therefore have a direct line of sight into the needed skills to be successful in today's economy. Overall, the council supports the vision and goals laid out in the plan, particularly the overarching strategy of continuing to bring together government, education, and industry to develop a transformative workforce development system for young business -- people and businesses alike. Beyond the overall support, the council submits the following comments for consideration. The council strongly believes that CTE programs should be held to consistent standards across all industries, and ideally, all CTE programs should be approved in order to maintain such consistency and quality. However, challenges with recruiting certified instructors in new fields, the lack of relevant industry credentials, which are constantly changing, so any list of approved credentials is often out of date as soon as it is published, and the length of time program approval takes due to understaffing at the State Education Department, among other reasons, means that in some instances, quality programs that are responsive to industry needs choose not to go through the program approval process. The council recommends that all CTE programs aspire to be approved, but yet, that there is a carve-out for new and emerging fields to enable state regulations to catch up with industry standards and trends. In addition, the council recommends that the State Education Department increase or reallocate internal resources to the program approval process. This will ensure that high-quality and emerging programs have the necessary support at the state level through the approval process. The council strongly agrees that all work-based learning opportunities be standardized in order to guarantee that each young person takes part in a quality experience. Much of the work of the council is focused on increasing the number of work-based learning opportunities available to CTE students. As such, experiences are seen as critical to future success. To this end, the council suggests that the plan more explicitly develop a required set of standards for work-based learning opportunities, as well as developing plans, particularly adequate funding for paid internships, to increase the availability for such opportunities for all CTE students. The City Department of Education's Work-Based Learning Toolkit is a good example of defining quality and standardizing work-based learning curricular resources, and can be found, and I'll provide the website afterwards. The plan touches on advancing equity in all aspects of CTE program. The council asks that the plan go further by developing As such, experiences are seen as critical to future success. To this end, the council suggests that the plan more explicitly develop a required set of standards for work-based learning opportunities, as well as developing plans, particularly adequate funding for paid internships to increase the availability for such opportunities for all CTE students. The City Department of Education's Work-Based Learning Toolkit is a good example of defining quality and standardizing work-based learning curricular resources and can be found, and I'll provide the website afterwards. The plan touches on advancing equity in all aspects of CTE program. The council asks that the plan go further by developing mechanisms to encourage students of all genders, races, ability, et cetera, to pursue programs that best fit their interests, skills, and talents. As the overall economy continues to evolve, many industries that traditionally required college degree for entry-level positions are reassessing if such degrees are a true determinant of a successful employee, with much more of a focus on technical skills attainment. To that end, the council suggests that the plans speak to career and citizenship success with college as a means to that end. The plan highlights the work of the Regional Economic Development Councils across the state in defining local workforce and community development activities. The New York City REDC works closely with many workforce development stakeholders, supporting Governor Cuomo's workforce development initiative. The council recommends that there be a formal mechanism for the better aligning of the REDC's work with CTE programming through expanding the REDC's workforce development efforts. Thank you again for the opportunity to comment on the plan. The council looks forward to continuing to work with the state and city departments of education as this important work moves forward. I'd also like to take this time. So we are the largest employer in the Bronx, Montefiore Medical Center, and we've been doing workforce development work very actively since 2013. We have about 117 hires directly from our program. And I do want to stress a couple of things. Work-based learning is very important, especially on the employability skills. There is a huge focus on technical skills, but a lot of the stuff that needs to be learned is really from the onsite exposure. A lot of the critical thinking, fitting into culture, customer service, which are often not tangible, but very important. The other thing I'd like to stress is the very importance of teacher externships. So with the council, we were able to hold two consecutive years of teacher externships this summer. It was successful. I wish there were more teachers that participated, but there's a clear lack in sort of what they understand about the industry, and it's a huge responsibility for them. They're teaching and kind of juggling industry, which changes at a blink's pace. So if we can make that more standard, kind of expand on that, I think that would be ideal. These young people need the exposure as soon as they can get it because all of this experience, which I think should be tracked, there's another extra work for you, would be great because we consider that on a resume. So HR does look at work-based learning seriously, and will consider that as part of experience that might not be traditional work experience to make somebody more eligible for hire. So thank you again for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the council in Montefiore. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Shaturko. I am the proud principal of the Urban Assembly New York Harbor School in Lower Manhattan here. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of our community, our teachers, and the 530 students who take the ferry to Governor's Island each and every day to engage in rigorous academic and maritime-related studies before, during, and after-school hours. Our school's unique location on Governor's Island located in Lower Manhattan is only matched by the uniqueness of our career and technical education programs. We offer seven CTE tracks, all designed around the work of the Billion Oyster Project. The Billion Oyster Project, along with the students and teachers at the New York Harbor School, are invested in populating the New York Harbor with oysters. Once again, for those of you who don't know, each oyster can filter up to 50 gallons of water per day. By populating the New York Harbor with 1 billion oysters by 2035, we will be able to filter and clean the New York Harbor every three to four days. This is much needed since the waste from our sewers and bathrooms flood the harbor every time it rains more than a quarter of an inch. As you can see, our school, like many of the schools in the New York City Department of Education, focuses on real-world problems as the center of our curriculum, yet too many outside regulations exist to keep these programs afloat. For instance, our innovative CTE programs like professional scuba diving have felt the challenge of finding appropriate approved assessments to support their certification clearance by the state. Several of our programs, such as vessel operations, aquaculture, marine systems technology, marine biology research, and ocean engineering are limited by Coast Guard regulations, which states that only a limited number of students can be on a vessel with instructors, causing our teacher-student ratio of each class to be lower than other programs around the state. This results in additional funding needed for our programs to fully impact our growing population of students. The fact remains that the availability of maritime jobs around New York and New Jersey are not being offered to New York City students and graduates because of lack of opportunity to engage, be trained, and experience life on the water. Simple opportunities such as learning how to swim, training in boat safety, and experiencing activities in our waterways is not being offered to the greater populations of students in New York City. We should be increasing our opportunities to students from all five boroughs to prepare them for the experience of onboard job opportunities, but instead, through limiting certification opportunities and funding, we are providing less and less to a population of students who need and want more from us. Every morning, I stand on Governor's Island and watch as over 500 students pour off of the Governor's Island ferry. A wave of enthusiasm and motivation floods the island as the high tide of attendance reaches close to 94% each and every day. Students and teachers make it from all five boroughs of our city through rain, wind, and snow to engage in their academics and maritime-related classes. As a New Yorker, I am grateful to these hard-working individuals to stay motivated all year round to help recharge our harbor and reconnect to their environment. As a person who grew up in Queens and never thought of the water as my future, our school and the New York City Department of Education is providing opportunities for students that they never knew existed, and now that they do, they are repaying our city by helping to restore it. Programs such as ours are unique and require greater need for specific support due to the challenges we face. We looked at a safer support of our programs, which will allow for greater impact of our students and our environment. I stand here not only presenting problems, but come bearing solutions as well. Our newest CTE program, Marine Policy and Advocacy, is committed to support you in your endeavors. Forty students from 10th to 12th grade make up this class. We'd be willing to meet with you to help solve the real-world problem as well. I thank you for your time and commitment. I appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Sterling Roberson, and I'm the United Federation of Teachers Vice President for Career and Technical Education. On behalf of the union's 200,000 members, including over 1,000 career and technical education teachers who serve our children matriculated through CTE programs, I would like to thank the New York State Education Department for holding this crucial public comment session on the Perkins Five State Plan. Our members will benefit from your listening to their voices and recommendations so that their students are in the best position for successful lives. Our union's advocacy, on behalf of expanding career and technical education programs and opportunities, is well-known. As a veteran career and technical education teacher who spends a considerable part of my work-life advocating for quality CTE programs and policies that strengthen our efforts toward graduating young men and women with certified credentials, I could speak firsthand about career and technical education's impact. Done well, educators and members receive cutting-edge training, funding, resources, and support services for students that can deliver industry-accredited instruction, enabling our students to advancing careers and higher learning. Under-resourced, we weaken our ability to retain educators with necessary skills, potential undercut strategic relationships with industry partners, and risk sending students into the workforce lacking the skills to compete effectively. So our emphasis in today's public comment will focus on three elements that should be included for consideration in the Perkins Plan for quality CTE programming. First, CTE program approval process. The current CTE program approval process remains a barrier to offering high-quality CTE programs of study and limits the innovation needed to meet the labor, to meet and align to labor market demands. The reapproval process has no differentiation from the approval process other than the reporting outcomes. We recommend a rubric-based approval process versus the current all-or-nothing process. Second, funding and resources. While funding and resources are not part of this plan, the success of new equity and special populations provision in the plan are closely tied to resources. To that end, SED, the Education Department School, should provide school districts with guidance regarding state and federal funding streams. For example, Title I for startup CTE, Title II for teacher certification and professional development, Title IV for engaging communities and middle schools in communities at large for CTE. And it's important when we think about these streams should be made available to support new CTE program development and expand access to CTE programming. There needs to be a more intentional teacher involvement as schools, districts implement the plan. Let me repeat that. There needs to be more intentional teacher involvement as school districts implement the plan. Although there is a stakeholder provision between the United Federation of Teachers that represents 200,000 members in New York and New York State United Teachers that represents over 600,000 educators and other professionals, as their representative, we should bring the teacher voice to the table. So I ask that the state education department expand that stakeholder pool to include the representatives of the educators who serve our children and communities every day. Third, CTE teacher preparation. Teacher preparation is an issue across New York State. We applaud SED's recent expansion of CTE certification pathway options, but it doesn't currently address the minimum number of CTE teacher prep programs across the state. Although New York City's success via apprenticeship, SVA program, and the Southern Regional Education Board, SREB, are successful teacher prep programs, they cannot meet the significant industry demands, especially if the needs of the plans are updated every two years. There has to be a balance between the need for staying abreast of economic and technological change and the stability of teacher prep programs that to date have been very successful. We need to ensure that CTE teachers in understanding, we need to support CTE teachers in understanding students with disabilities through professional development, multilingual learners, as well as English-language learners to ensure that the academic levels that are set are attainable for students. This support also includes teachers and school counselors that facilitate work-based learning. So the United Federation of Teachers, although I made these comments, these are just a few touchpoints to highlight today, but we will be submitting formal comments for your consideration. And thank you for your time, and we look forward to working with you and all of the stakeholders to finalize the plan and meet the needs of educators and the children and the communities they serve. Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to start by first extending my appreciation to the members of the New York State Department of Education, the New York CTE Technical Assistance Center, and the United Federation of Teachers for hosting this important event to offer comment on the New York Perkins Five draft plan that will ultimately impact the hundreds of CTE programs of study across New York City and the entire state. My name is John Whedlin, and I serve as the Executive Director for Career and Technical Education under the Office of Post-Secondary Readiness in the New York City Department of Education, and will offer comment on the current draft plan and the implications on our CTE programs. Moreover, the New York City Department of Education will submit formal written comments later today. I am joined here by many of our school leaders, CTE teachers, and our central team who understand the importance of Perkins Five in supporting our district-wide effort to provide our diverse young people with a variety of career exploration and development experiences that cultivate their interests while also preparing them for in-demand occupations and contributing to the emerging needs of the economy. My experience with career and technical education first started as a student at Ralph R. McKee CTE High School, where I was first exposed to electrical engineering. The exposure to CTE and electrical engineering propelled me to apply and enter the Success Via Apprenticeship Program, where I started on a path to a career as a CTE teacher at Chelsea CTE High School. I was a CTE teacher for seven and a half years and eventually became the principal of George Westinghouse Career and Technical High School, and then the School of Cooperative Technical Education, where I stayed until moving into my current role at the central office. This comprehensive experience with CTE has afforded me the privilege of leading the city's efforts in establishing and growing CTE across our public school system. I know the impact and value of CTE from my own personal experience as a student and as a professional, which is why I offer my voice today on behalf of the thousands of students and educators who are and will be impacted by the state's Perkins Plan. The New York City Department of Education and its educators across all five boroughs are committed to delivering high-quality career and technical education programs of study for students in our public schools. Our CTE programs are serving close to 64,000 students, so Perkins Five funding is critical for our schools to continue to develop, innovate, and reinvent themselves as necessary to meet the needs of both our students and the changing economy. To ensure high-quality CTE programming, our central team works closely with our schools to support and guide their development toward becoming a NICED-approved CTE program. However, there are many challenges and barriers to program approval, and with the state's proposed decision to allow only New York State education-approved CTE programs to be eligible for Perkins Five funding, this has negatively impacted more than 60 of our CTE programs that are in various phases of their development for program approval. If the strategic vision for Perkins Five in the proposed state plan is to, and I quote, "prepare an educated and skilled workforce, including special populations, and for meeting the skilled workforce needs of employers, then it is imperative to ensure an ample flexibility in the state's CTE compliance requirements in order for districts and local communities to build and expand CTE." The CTE compliance requirements, and specifically the NICED CTE approval process, must be more permissive rather than more prohibitive for the inclusion of more CTE programs in various stages of program approval. In New York City, we created 40 new CTE programs in the past three years for the exact purpose stated in the state's strategic vision, to prepare an educated and skilled workforce, inclusive of special populations, and meeting the needs of employers. Yet, many of these CTE programs are no longer eligible for Perkins Five funding because they are not NICED-approved as of yet. We agree with the pursuit for the development of high-quality CTE programs, which we recognize is what the NICED CTE approval process is meant to ensure. However, there must be flexibility in the approval process that allows for the cultivation of strong CTE programming without diminishing or penalizing the considerable efforts districts and schools are exerting. Therefore, we want to offer comment to NICED to consider providing more flexibility in CTE program approval so current and future CTE programs are eligible for resources and funding available through Perkins Five. We offer two considerations now. The first consideration is to allow all programs of study to be part of the Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment, CLNA. Programs that are not part of the CLNA are not funding-eligible in the 2020-2021 school year. NICED set a November 1st, 2019 deadline for programs to have earned approval to be considered for this needs assessment. The efforts of schools to meet program approval throughout this school year should be funding-eligible once approval is attained. The designated November deadline is restrictive and penalizes those programs that are close to approval but are unable to meet this designated November deadline. Good work completed in the 2019 and '20 school year should not have to wait until the 2021-22 school year to receive this supplemental funding. The second consideration is to allow for innovative programs in emerging industries to be funding-eligible throughout program implementation. to be funding-eligible throughout program implementation. Whole industries are forming rapidly in New York, such as artificial intelligence, machine learning, drone piloting, and advanced manufacturing, to name a few. And all would be ineligible for funding because the state has not been able to keep up with these emerging fields from teacher certification to technical assessment. Yet, if programs lack even one NICED approval indicator, the program cannot meet state approval and consequently are ineligible for this vital supplemental funding. The development of new and high-quality CTE programs of study rely on Perkins supplemental funding, and we are affirming the need to expand or increase the flexibility for funding eligibility. Again, thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment on Perkins Five proposed state plan. I look forward to our continued collaboration and collective success as we enter into this next phase of career and technical education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to submit comments. My name is Ally Leidy. I'm the Associate Executive Director at the New York State Network for Youth Success. The network's mission is to strengthen the capacity and commitment of communities, programs, and professionals to increase access to high-quality programs and services beyond the traditional classroom, that is, expanded learning. Expanded learning opportunities include programs that serve youth in kindergarten through 12th grade and take place in schools or in community-based settings, and occur before and after school, during weekends, holidays, and summer breaks, or during the school day through partnerships with community organizations. As the statewide organization dedicated to after-school programs and other expanded learning opportunities in the state, we ask that a revised version of the plan take into consideration equity and inclusiveness by incorporating expanded learning programs and community-based organizations as strategic partners. The network believes that after-school is a critical partner for career and workforce development. New York has successful after-school programs serving more than 100,000 children, which are funded through the state's Advantage After-School Program and Empire State After-School Program, and also through federal 21st Century Community Learning Center grants. Local funding in the state supports many additional programs as well. Expanded learning programs continue to play a key role in preparing the future workforce of New York by teaching career skills, exposing youth to new careers, and inspiring youth to reach their full potential. After-school and summer learning programs teach leadership, problem-solving, critical thinking, teamwork, responsibility, and time management, which youth need to be successful in the workforce. Studies show that cognitive skills such as these are significantly more important in determining economic outcomes than school attainment. The after-school hours offer time for apprenticeships, guest speakers, and project-based activities that build workforce skills and promote career exploration. These activities, which many schools do not have the time and resources to provide, are key to helping students become college and career-ready and make a successful transition to and after post-secondary education. Expanded learning programs like Career Ready NYC empowers young New Yorkers to make informed and thoughtful choices regarding their career goals and the educational options needed to achieve them by prioritizing career awareness and exploration at middle school. Through after-school and summer programs, Girls Who Code provides introductory computer science programs for middle and high school girls, where they learn about computer science, gain exposure to tech jobs, and join a sisterhood of girls who are using computer science to become change-makers. These examples highlight how expanded learning programs in New York are preparing youth for careers in the workforce. There is much potential to foster connections between CTE and expanded learning opportunities to provide greater support for career-connected learning. Many career exposure programs partner and coordinate with after-school and summer programs to increase youth experiences in a broad range of career pathways. Moreover, after-school programs in New York serve a significant percentage of low-income and at-risk youth and offer flexible and responsive settings to ensure that students with disabilities and English language learners and multilingual learners can equitably and fully participate in CTE. Many after-school programs also support building student interest, exposure, and experience in non-traditional and underrepresented career fields for students of special populations. After-school programs and community-based organizations are also great avenues to disseminate information because they are often trusted sources for families and are much more connected to community needs. These avenues also help foster equitable access of information as they can help bridge the informational gap for students, parents, and other key community members who cannot effectively consume technical information or navigate web programs and online resources. After-school programs, community partners, and organizations can be key stakeholders who contribute critical input on CTE programming, implementation, and instruction. The State Education Department should therefore expand its strategic vision, planning, and set of goals in the Perkins Plan to support collaboration and encourage innovative partnerships and relationships with community partners and youth-serving providers, such as after-school and summer programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us and opening up this public hearing. I'm the principal of Aviation High School. We are a fully a career and technical education program that focuses on aviation maintenance, and I want to really reiterate and state the importance of CTE for all of our students across the state. This is a crucial time where students are coming to us in high school not having the hand skills and the training, working on bikes and cars and working to learn their skills before they get to, into a career path. So when they get to schools like ours, it's very important that there's funding and support to make sure that real, realistic, great-paying jobs that are available to our students in this state, especially in airports and related to our career field, that students can get access to and get the proper training for. And the CTE Perkins Act provides that ability for our students. It's really important that this funding and the plan for the new Perkins Act provides additional pathways for our students to gain more improved work-based learning opportunities. It's really the work-based learning opportunities to provide our students with the greatest experiences. It's the hands-on, real-life work they do alongside technicians in all the variety of fields that our schools provide support to. And these work-based learning trips and professional organizations that our students can be a part of really provide them with the connection to the career fields that are expanding. And just to give you an idea of why I think this is so important, why I'm so passionate about it, for the aviation field as an example, the Boeing report for the next 20 years that there'll be a need for 750,000 technicians across the nation, across the world, excuse me, and 200,000 here in the United States. So it's a definite area where we're seeing a great demand, and I'm sure I'm not the only field that is also seeing this huge demand coming forward from these real important hand skills-based jobs and highly trained and certified jobs. So it's very important that this plan incorporates opportunities for us to expand upon the programs we have and provide even more important opportunities for them in the field, working alongside adults that can train them as they work in internships and other work-based learning opportunities. So that's what I wanted to say, and thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Mozo Heda, Principal of Thomas Edison Career and Technical Education High School. Thank you for holding this. I think I'm here just to advocate because I know a few principals whose funding's been cut because their programs were in development in stages, and it's to the point where they're getting rid of programs. And that truly will hurt students who were there for that particular program at that school. And so I think that we need to consider the harm that that's going to cause and find a way to try to support these programs to be approved and continue to get the funding. In addition, I'm also working on a middle school pipeline to Edison. And so CT is at the middle school level, and so I think that we need to give some concern to the middle schools as far as when it comes to programming them so that can lead to a high school and make a transition seamless, because in doing so and providing them the funding to do that, we can then provide more college readiness, right? And I think that the true definition of CTE is a college and career readiness aspect. So those are important as well as keeping in mind that today, we can no longer say, five years from now, I'm going to be this, 10 years from now, I'm going into this field. They may not be there. And so how do we remain current and develop the workforce for the 21st century? We need to think outside the box. And so we need to make sure that we consider these innovative programs that lead to what we're going to need in the future before we find ourselves without the workforce for the future. And so that's another thing that I'm here to advocate for, is to please consider those programs that are not generally the ones that are approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me for my voice. I'm here as a CTE educator, I'm an architecture teacher, but for the last five years, I've been associated with a CTSO called Skills USA, and last year I was chosen as the advisor trustee for New York City. I just had a question as to, or a comment as to funding, I know that's not part of this here, but how will this be funded and how will CTSOs, which are mentioned in the Perkins Grant at the federal level, be addressed this year? We were not allowed to use any funding sources at all from Perkins to pay for Skills USA or any other CTSO. We had a variety in our school building particularly, and many schools dropped out of conferences, competitions, and all that. So I know I speak for a variety of schools, at least a half a dozen to a dozen, that utilize and rely on Skills USA as well as other CTSOs for student work-based learning opportunities as well as just general CTE learning opportunities. I wrote a lot of notes, but I can't speak very much longer, so I don't want to. But in general, most of these CTSOs give our students opportunities that they would never be able to utilize due to their inner-city nature and not having access to financial resources. For instance, the travel costs are significant, and that's what we're not allowed to spend, and our students cannot raise the kind of money that it takes to travel to these variety of competitions, conferences. These competitions and conferences aren't fun. They're not like a sports conference, they're work, the students do work-based learning, the students learn crucial skills that will help prepare them for the future regardless of their chosen CTE course or trade. So that's my big priority, and I hope that Perkins, New York State Education Department does address it and be specific as to how funds will be allocated for CTSOs in general. Thank you.
I do know that you can't speak, and you said you had notes. Can I encourage you to make sure to submit them to the box? Thank you.
My name is Emily Moretzky, and I am a CTE teacher and the CTE department chair at Energy Tech High School in Astoria, Queens. I just wanted to put a face to the people who are affected by many of the ways that the approval process is set up. I am a former New York City teaching fellow who taught math for many years and recently tried to switch over to become a CTE teacher. I studied engineering and worked in technology for a number of years and have taught in the New York City public schools as well as international schools, charter schools, and an education nonprofit before returning to New York City. Returning to the DOE and trying to get a CTE license was one of the most difficult and frustrating obstacles that I have faced in my career, just due to bureaucracy. There are so many different fields within engineering. There is mechanical, electrical, civil, chemical, industrial, human factors, biomedical, in addition to many other smaller and more specialized fields. New York recognizes two. I happen to fall under one of the branches of engineering that's not recognized. I took so many of the same classes that other engineers took, but yet New York deems me as ineligible to be able to teach engineering here. Somehow, someone in the CTE office decided that I could get certified under a computer technology license, which is not really the right fit, but I took it and I ran. Now, the school that I work at is in the same boat as me. We're not easily categorized under the state's CTE areas. We're in the pipeline now. Energy Tech High School is pursuing an energy tech CTE certification. I'm the environmental engineering teacher. We're a six-year P-Tech school partnered up with LaGuardia Community College, and we're really stuck on the state CTE application. Our work-based learning coordinator can't get certified because she doesn't have the right work experience, though she's wonderful and has been working at our school for a number of years. We cannot find a good qualifying exam. As the 11th grade engineering teacher, that's my job, I should be preparing students for an exam, but there is literally no exam that is appropriate for energy technology that exists. I've reached out to other schools who have similar programs, and they have all found something that's not quite the right fit either and are dealing with that. Additionally, even though I'm a former engineer in addition to some of my other coworkers, because I have this computer technology license, I am technically out of compliance with our program. And our school might get our application rejected just because I have some weird certification issue. So I really wish that people would look into this a little bit more and loosen up some of these requirements, because we're impacted by the lack of funding that will occur because we are not officially approved yet.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lissa Wolf, and I appreciate this time to speak. I am a parent at the Urban Assembly New York Harbor School. I fell in love with this school 16 years ago when it first started in Bushwick. It's an incredible, unusual school that provides maritime industry jobs, job readiness, which you can't find anywhere else. It is so unique. And when it first started, and it continues to be the case, that freshmen will come in and be scared of the water. And with the different programs such as rowing and sailing, they actually become excited about going to a maritime school and learning about maritime programs. My stepson is in the MST program, which is Marine Systems Technology. He was basically flunking out of middle school. So this is a very personal thing for me. He worships the ground that the MST teachers walk on. They are like the Tom Sawyers of the marine technology world. And he's in a welding program that will transfer into pretty much any land- or water-based field that he can go to. And I have seen many kids who were floundering in middle school and possibly going to drop out of high school succeed because of this school and because of the programs that the CTE teachers have been able to cultivate. And the CTE teachers have been in this industry, or their corresponding industries, for many years and have wonderful contacts, but these contacts are looking for interns that will grow with their companies. They do not need somebody who can be there for 60 hours. You know, basically, under two weeks, these kids can currently, you know, apply for these internships, which are paid internships. Before this cut, these cuts for the Perkins Act, you know, these kids were able to go to one or two different internships and had a maximum of like 270 hours, and those are for the paid internships. And our kids are not all, you know, coming from well-to-do backgrounds. They are the face of New York City, and I cannot stress this enough. I've seen the maritime industry, and it looks like my face. It has been slowly changing, and it is due to schools like the Urban Assembly. It has been slowly changing, and it is due to schools like the Urban Assembly New York Harbor School that that is happening. So I just, this is very personal and very local. We are a very small school. We are under 600 students. And most of our CTEs are certified, but we have two that are not. And we are looking to get those certified as quickly as possible, because each CTE is incredibly important. And as the world is becoming more and more covered by water, it is so important that we have all these different, you know, resources and that these kids succeed. And they need the Perkins Act and the full funding to be able to succeed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I wasn't ready the first time it was called, I'm sorry. Well, my name is Santiago Ruiz. I'm currently Assistant Principal of CT at New Vision Charter High School for the Humanities. We're not eligible for Perkins funding at the moment, but I'm not here for that. I'm here to advocate for the public schools that need this funding. For the idea that new programs can't be funded, it's very disheartening to me. You know, prior to being an AP in charter school, I worked in, I was in SVA. And I worked at a school called Katona International High School. And we were afforded the ability and the flexibility to establish a new program, a recording arts program. And that funding for startup schools, CTE programs, is what allowed us to do that. Without that funding, we wouldn't have been able to change the lives that we changed. See, CTE changes lives. It saves lives. You know, we're located in the Bronx where a neighborhood is run by gangs. And for five years, I've watched students turn away from that because they had something else to look forward to, because it was something new and innovative. Students that would otherwise be disaffected saw, wow, you know what? This is a program, someone's listening to my life, to what I like to do, and I'm going to take advantage of that. And I watched students blossom and grow. And then right now, our college graduates are entrepreneurs, all because they were able to participate in a program that wasn't a traditional program, that wasn't already approved, or wasn't previously funded. So by taking that funding away from new programs, you take that opportunity, that access away from students and neighborhoods that need it. It's a dire need in the neighborhoods. You know, every day, I see students become more and more disaffected because school doesn't speak to them. We're not allowing school to speak to them. So we need that funding. We need to explore programs. We need to expand CTE in the schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in this public hearing. My name is Simona Jo Tate. I am the founding principal of Inwood Early College High School. We are one of the nine PTEC, nine through 14, schools here in New York City. My colleagues have all spoken quite eloquently about the issues and the concerns. I'd like to echo and place particular emphasis on what I really had as a question, which is how do we use Perkins to leverage the work that's already being done through our partnerships with the colleges and universities and through our partnerships with industry representatives? At Inwood Early College, we are, we have an IT program that is state-approved, and so we are continuing to receive that funding. However, as has been said, we don't have funding to support the expansion and addition of new programs. And so right now, I am without funding support to expand IT programs, but also to actually create the health professions, which is another program for which my school was designed and for which many of my students actually selected to apply and be admitted to our school. So at this moment, I'm actually not sure what I'm going to tell them all. We have incredible partnerships with CUNY, Bronx Community College, is our college partner. So our students are able to dual-enroll in college courses beginning in 10th grade. They're able to, if they choose, to actually complete the associate's degree at no cost to them in one of the STEM areas. And in our case, it is cybersecurity networking or the biological sciences. So those opportunities obviously represent an enormous array of career options for our students. However, we face the same challenges as our colleagues in terms of trying to find certified teachers in the categories that make sense for the programs that we run. In terms of trying to figure out a way to leverage that partnership, we have college faculty members who teach our students the high school courses. The students are receiving the college credits and one high school credit, but those college faculty members are not considered certified in terms of being CTE teachers. So as we continue to struggle to find folks to come out of industry into teaching so that they can in fact be a part of our CTE programs, here we have this enormous pool of folks who are our partners and working with our students through the college program, but yet still, they are not even eligible, even though they are teaching at the college level. They're not able to get certified to teach at the high school level in CTE. So my question again is, how do we think differently in order to leverage those partnerships and leverage the skill, the experience, the knowledge, and the love for our kids that our college partners have so that we can continue to strengthen and expand our programs? I'll say one final word about our industry partners, because similarly, New York Presbyterian Hospital and Microsoft happen to be our partners. And they also are positioned to really support the experiences of our students, providing mentoring, providing internships and the like. But in terms of program approval, there's nothing that I can do at this point that would allow us to take advantage of those folks on the industry side, because again, the, as was said very well, the process of trying to get someone certified, even through the transitional A process, is really unbelievably complicated. I'll say it that way, since this is for the public record. So again, I encourage our colleagues to think about how do we leverage those partnerships with the colleges and universities? How do we leverage partnerships with folks on the industry side so that we can in fact innovate and expand these opportunities for more of our students? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. I'm a parent and PTA member at the New York Harbor School. And there are a couple of things, I'm speaking from a parent point of view here and also as an employer, because as a parent, I've seen the devastation that these new cuts have made to our school, where the net effect of capping things at 60 hours down from what was previously a limit of 240, 270, whereas one CTE teacher in our school said it was virtually unlimited, has been to basically disembowel the CTE program in many of our different areas. It's been pretty devastating, and I've watched a lot of kids whose entire senior year has been, had a schedule that was really allowing them to engage in these internships now be drastically interrupted because the internships aren't there. Our school is scrambling to try to find some way to deal with this and to find substitutions. As an employer, somebody who owned my own publishing house for three decades, the idea of hiring somebody for 60 hours is pretty ridiculous, because you wouldn't in that space of time be able to teach them to do anything meaningful at all. And you know, the third thing I wanted to say is just to respond to the teacher that was here from Energy Tech, thank you, Energy Tech, that we also have experienced some of the problems because the state tests are so, I would say, not only narrow, but also antiquated in the way that they certify the programs, is that, for example, our marine biology program, which is exceptional by any standard, where these kids come in with very, very little knowledge of science or the methods of, you know, serious research, and they're taken to a very high level, and they go toe-to-toe with Stuyvesant and Bronx Science and some of the specialized schools and win at these contests, because we have an incredible program and an exceptional teacher. But he was forced to bend this program to get certified to take either a husbandry test, where the kids were going to be evaluated on questions like, where do you put your fertilizer? Or a floral arrangement test, which was one of the ones that was offered, because the program areas really don't address the kind of environmental science that is the future of New York City. And you know, our kids are learning about how to build ocean engineering, how to build dikes, how to prevent climate change, you know, episodes. They're learning in the professional diving program, which is now getting certified, even though we're the only school in the country that has this one particular certification in diving. We have, you know, the kids are eligible for seven different certifications, and yet New York State hasn't yet certified us. So I think that the state program has some issues. And the last thing I want to say is that the Perkins Plan needs to be addressed beyond the state at a national level, because we've all seen the way they've been trying to peel off the funding with Secretary DeVos and Mr. Trump. And I think that New York State should really come together and try to, you know, think about a bigger response to the whole issue, because it doesn't stop with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just take a quick minute to remind everyone that has not submitted written comments when you registered or brought them here this evening, please make sure you add your written comments to the CTEPerkinsPlan@NYSEED.gov email address. I know that the State Education Department is committed to addressing each and every comment and question that was brought forth throughout all of these public hearings, but it's really important that you submit those questions and comments to that email address.
Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Here as long as you need me. Can you just at least register your name with Tim back there? I don't know.
Hi, I'm Lisa Edstrom. I'm also a parent at the Urban Assembly New York Harbor School. And I just want to echo something that my fellow parent, Lisa, said earlier, and that's that the CTEs really do change lives. And in this case, in my son's case, it's saving his life. He would not be in high school if it were not for a CTE program, and specifically the one he's in, same one that Lisa's son is in, the Marine Systems Technology Program. So as you go back and figure out what you're doing with this, please remember that there are children who depend on these programs, youth that need these programs, and that any cuts to funding, they hurt us, they hurt families of New York. So you know, to put, someone else said, you know, to put a face to this, my kid is another one of those faces. And the kids at New York Harbor School, they look like me, you know? Low-income kids of color, middle-class kids from all over the city. I mean, we're diverse, we're, but our kids need these programs, and we need them all over the state. So please remember that.
Thank you.
One of the common themes today seems to be the restrictive nature of the proposed plan. And having read some of the voluminous pieces of the federal legislation, I understand the force behind those restrictions. And yet, we're here looking at a plan that's going to be four or five years down the road affecting schools and students. I can't imagine other states not having a similar theme running through their challenges as they deal with the federal Perkins law. I don't know if there's a vehicle. I couldn't imagine, but it seems to me we're at a critical juncture where state departments of education need to consolidate, collaborate, communicate, whatever, to grab a hold of some of the dinosaurs that conceived this new law in Washington and say, look, we need an amendment immediately, even if we have to back up a year, there's some serious problems with this. I don't know if it starts with our legislators in Congress, but I think we're at a juncture where that needs to happen. And I can't imagine multiple states disagreeing with that. So if there's a way, go for it.
Thank you. Tim, did we, did everyone who was registered to speak did speak and is here? I'm mindful, folks, of the session going four to seven. In the last two sessions that we've done across the state, they haven't. But what I will do is I'll put a pause on the video. I just want to make sure that we don't get somebody who, for whatever reason, is coming in a bit late.
You have, everyone that registered to speak has spoken.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, well, I'll still put it on. I'm going to be here for a little while longer anyhow, and you know, I'm happy to speak with folks offline. Thank you.